I never see any of it.
No, trails and hills.
Oh, NAMI's first?
I think Alice wants to come on.
That is me. I don't even have an example for it. I just kind of go up there and just go. It's like, oh.
Do your humble thing.
I think you have to work. It's always a nice big surrender.
And then they have to do two projects in certain areas.
I think there's got a musical. This one got shot.
Well, the other thing too is the city. They might be able to partner with Robert Allen.
She's a good kid.
Robert Porter Allen. Say it again.
I will.
Robert Porter Allen. The Robert Porter Allen project helped them.
We asked you, Carol, to be clear.
To what's happening. Because eventually that will support the transit system.
I think that needs backup.
Yeah, I saw that.
Did you tell them?
He's a good kid.
I'm going to say it Tuesday or Thursday.
My thing is Sandy's been going in next. I like the sound of him saying, until the WBA, I think the WBA was in fear. But it's keeping the bottom.
Tim, you'll appreciate it. So I gave a curse. But no. So I said, I think you'll appreciate this.
Yeah, and Kale was talking to someone.
How are you?
Better than I know right now.
Don't be, you could be never caught.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hello.
No. Okay. Well, we'll talk about it. Second.
We haven't become good.
That's okay. Good, bad, different. It's good to hear it.
Right. Okay. All right. All right. All right. All right. Okay. Well, we'll talk about it. Second. Yeah.
We haven't become good.
That's okay. Good, bad, different. It's good to hear it.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right. 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 Thanks for being here.
Good morning, sir. Yeah. We sat home last night. We sat home last night. Yes. Good morning, that's really happy. Good morning. Thank you. Ready, Rick?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and to pledge allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we call upon you this morning as we gather to conduct the business of the county. We are thankful that we can reach out to you during any moment of the day. You have created us with a desire to have a relationship where we can acknowledge, depend, and seek your guidance and wisdom daily. Today, we recognize and celebrate the National Day of Prayer, proclaimed by President Harry Truman in 1952 and moved to the first Thursday in May by President Ronald Reagan. The National Day of Prayer is observed by millions across our great land. Our founding fathers recognized the importance of prayer in our Creator, and may we also recognize the importance of prayer not only on this day but to incorporate prayer into our lives daily. Lord, today we honor and recognize Institutional Parole and Corrections Employee Week. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed this week in May to honor those that serve in his field. In Pennsylvania, those safe and secure operations are managed by approximately 32,000 trained professional personnel. And we are thankful for those dedicated professionals that we're going to feel that most would not choose. They are committed to safety while assisting individuals making changes to reduce further recidivism. Father, bless them for their work, and we ask for you to protect them in the future, and your hand be over them. Father, as we convene our meeting, may your hand be over us. Guide us with your infinite wisdom that we will do what is your will. We humbly bring these requests before you on this National Day of Prayer. May our nation always turn towards you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome in the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time and ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair, so aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Do we have any public comment on agenda items only at this time?
No, not mine.
Okay. And we have two proclamations today, and first would be Commissioner Mayor Vito.
Good morning. Kelly Gordon, where's Kelly Gordon? There you are. Okay, great. When I see Carol. Okay. Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2023. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, it affects people in our communities, how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health allows us to maintain relationships, build strong communities, take care of ourselves and our families, take care of our physical bodies, and respond and adapt to daily life changes. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and National Institute of Mental Health, among other organizations, report that 50% of all lifetime mental health disorders commonly begin at the age of 14 in adolescence and 75% by the age of 24. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 14 and the third-leading cause of death among those aged 15 to 24 in the United States. And whereas a lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals and communities, suicide is the 12th-leading cause of death overall in the U.S., and 46% of people who die by suicide had a diagnosed mental health condition. And whereas mental illness, unlike physical illness, cannot be diagnosed with a blood test, while each mental illness condition has a unique set of symptoms, those symptoms often overlap between different conditions, which makes exact diagnosing difficult. Treatment for mental illness is voluntary and takes time and persistence to see results, and often an individual suffering with a mental illness is not aware they are ill. And whereas early warning signs often emerge at the onset of worse symptoms, and these warning signs include thoughts, feelings, or behaviors that significantly impair day-to-day functioning, for example, feeling excessively sad or low, an early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas people with mental illness are overrepresented in our nation's jails and prisons, about 2 in 5 people who are incarcerated have a history of mental illness, and 70% of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosable mental health condition. And approximately 3 in 5 people with a history of mental illness do not receive mental health treatment while incarcerated in state and federal prisons. And whereas individuals in rural communities often face unique challenges when receiving and managing their mental health care, and rural Americans may travel 2 times as far to their nearest hospital or provider to receive treatment. And rural individuals are 2 times more likely to have limited access to broadband internet, limiting access to virtual care, and they're more likely to reside in a mental health professional shortage area, whereas there are too few providers to meet mental health demands. And whereas greater public awareness, education, and civic activities in our communities can address the challenges facing people with mental illness and can support, empower, and insist, assist in improving the lives of individuals, family, and communities affected by mental illness. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness, now therefore the Lycoming County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. In Lycoming County and call observance to the attention of all our citizens and witness whereof we have set our hand and caused the seal of executive department to be affixed this 4th day of May in the year 2023. Signed, Lycoming County Commissioner Scott L. Metzger, Chairman, Tony Armisera, Vice Chairman, and Richard Mayor Vito, Secretary. Whoa, there's a lot to say there, and I guess it's good for us to hear it at least once a year. And as I read it, I thought it's really compelling that we're also here honoring our individuals who work in the prisons and the jails, but I won't diverge into that at this point except to say we need to rethink what we call our prisons and our jails and begin by changing the name to get the public to understand that when we closed all the mental health facilities, we didn't have a plan in place anywhere. And I don't think it's because we're bad people. I think it's because we didn't understand the relationship between lack of care and stigma and the fact that this care is voluntary and the tremendous burden on us to try to get people to understand how to get help, and of course, the fact that in so many communities there isn't the help available. So I don't know. We, I do say that I feel pretty good that as a Board of Commissioners, we have certainly tried and we will continue to try, and I think that we have established a cultural awareness in the Commissioners' office to pass from one generation of Commissioners to another, that paying attention to providing programs and support in the area of mental health in both our prison and outside our prison is our responsibility. So I know there are people here today, Mr. Chairman, who probably like, but I just, I just want to thank all of you who participate. And just one last thing, you know, many of you know that outside of here, I own, I'm a landlord, as are several of us. And 25 years ago, I think, when I ran into a situation with a tenant that was completely off the wall, I would have reacted with anger, and now I'm beginning to try to understand what is the mental health issue going on there. Because when people tell me, when I say, listen, you have to ABC, and they say DEF, it's incumbent on all of us, I guess, in our daily encounters to try to pause and sort of do a recheck and say, okay, what's going on here? Is the person being belligerent, is being hostile, or is there something else going on? When we do that, we sort of implement on a day-to-day basis what I read in the proclamation. Proclamations are meaningless unless we really try to change our behavior and understand how we can do that, that it makes a big difference. So anyway, I'm trying, I'm trying my best. I still, none of us are perfect, but we try to do that.
Would anyone like to speak?
Yeah. It's a good place to stand.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity. Forgive me, my voice, I'm suffering from a small cold, but I would like to say on behalf of the Board Directors of NAMI of North Central PA, and I as President would like to thank everybody in Lycoming County, including our Commissioners, for the proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. With your support and the community's support, we at NAMI can continue to provide advocacy, education, resources, and peer support for those who are impacted by mental illness. By ending the stigma, it removes the isolation for those who struggle, and it creates a community of help, awareness, acceptance, and support. Strong mental health programs impacts individuals, families, and our communities and our society, so we can be productive, confident, and a resource to each other. The collaboration with the Lycoming County Commissioners strengthens this program and our opportunities and allows our community to have a voice for change. We humbly thank you for this opportunity, and we'd like to remind the community that mental, mental health professionals do not, you don't have to be a professional to advocate, to encourage, or support. Anybody can be a volunteer for NAMI. And one thing I just always like to speak of is too often, kind of hitting on what Commissioner Mayor Vito had mentioned, is that we think of mental illness or mental health as, we have an image in our head of what that might look like. I myself am in 15 years of recovery from a severe eating disorder. My partner has been in recovery from alcoholism for quite a few years now, six. So we are working professionals in the field, we have children, we're good parents, but I always like to put out there that I am an image too, that people see as a professional, but I too have had my mental struggles. I'm a big advocate for therapy, and you can always prosper, there's help there for you. I'd like to offer an opportunity for Mr. Tim Mahoney to also speak on some of the efforts too in regards to our Suicide Prevention Committee and our lethal means outreach.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Just aside, the NAMI of North Central Pennsylvania was resurrected in 2014 by a certain individual. Carol, could you stand up, please? She saw. With her work and all the Board members we have, we're boots on the ground. We don't need a proclamation to tell us what we need to do, but we need to get attention to the community about what goes on. We had a suicide prevention walk in South Williamsport, over 100 people attended that before a vicious rainstorm. We got it in. We're going to help with a veteran with a walk around the Riverwalk. If we see an opportunity for someone who has a mental health cause, we want to be into it. We want them to be under our tent, so we can help them out either financing, volunteers, brochures, anything that we can do. The idea is just to get the word out. Our Suicide Prevention Committee was combined by getting all the agencies together. Before, there were three different groups meeting about suicide prevention. We said, no, we need to be one voice, and they meet monthly to look at, address issues in the schools and everything else. So every day is Mental Health Awareness Day for us, and we meet monthly to determine what is the need is in the community, that we can divert funds, attention, whatever, and your support will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. So proclamations, and people say, why do you do proclamations? And the reason is because of awareness, making people aware of different topics and issues. And there is a stigmatism around mental health. People think that, you know, I'm stronger than that, you know, I don't have any issues, and they go into denial. And my partner, when I was over probation, Lou Yengling, he handled the mental health cases, and I, we went out and called together in the field, and I would see what these people were experiencing, people that were struggling on a daily basis. And the challenges they faced in the community, the funding, and the fact that the state funding hasn't been increased in over a decade, and Governor Shapiro has more funding in his new budget, hopefully it'll go through, so we can start to address this. And we know that you didn't have to be someone that was accurate on predictions, but you knew it was going to happen after COVID, that more people were going to struggle with mental health issues, and we see it. You know, during, during COVID, when you hear that 25% of people from 18 to 24 want to commit suicide, that's alarming. One of my closest friends that I grew up with, he committed suicide. His whole life unraveled in six months, and something snapped and he took his life. And he's buried less than a mile from my house, and I walk my dog by his gravesite basically 3 times a week. And I look at the hole he left, so many lives, his 2 children, and no one wants that. No one wants that to happen. And we all know somebody that's experienced this. And if we can reach out and make people aware and then have empathy, people don't have empathy these days. Just sit and listen. You don't have to say anything, just sit and listen to what they're experiencing. You know, take a moment to speak to someone that doesn't have anybody or is going through a hard time. You know, you see a coworker, you see something off, just take a moment, say, listen, I'm not trying to interfere, but you just don't seem to be yourself. You want, I'm here to talk if you need to talk. You know, everybody's busy and you get consumed with your daily activities, but just take a moment to observe the people around you and see what you can do to try to help. We have some wonderful organizations in this county that provide the help. It's there, it's tough to get workers, that's one of the issues right now, finding counselors to be in this field, finding a psychiatrist at the prison to be in this field. We were blessed to have Dr. Calvert for years. She's retired. And trying to find a psychiatrist is really difficult, isn't it, Chris? Brad? Extremely. So not only the funding's a problem, it's the, it's the manpower shortage in that field too. So we just ask that you have empathy. Don't look down on people that are struggling, because by God's grace, that could be any one of us, and every one of us go through trials and tribulations, every one of us. The end result is we want that person to be here on earth with us and not to do something that leaves a lot of heartache and their loss.
I'm not sure if there's any more I can say, you know, but, you know, it's time to take action. So how do you take action? We all see emotions on people's faces sometimes, and we reach out and say, is everything okay? You know, you know, ask, ask. I'll never forget the gentleman, I wish I could remember his name, but he came to the Penn College and told us his story about jumping off the Golden Gate Bridge.
Kevin Hines. He'll be coming to our county here soon in September. NAMI's bringing him in as a speaker. It'll be free for the public.
One of the most terrible stories I've ever heard. And, and just to think that this man's walking up the bridge and just saying that one person, just one person, would reach out to me and say, is everything okay? Are you okay? That he would not have jumped, right? And to hear his story, I mean, phenomenal. And so I don't know if he'll be saying, telling the same story or not, so I won't for those that haven't, but just acts of kindness and being able to recognize that somebody is going through something, you know, and especially if you know they lost a loved one or even a pet, you know, reach out, and you will make a difference. Thank you.
Commissioner, there's 3 comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Keystone Chief, God bless our mental health and intellectual disability citizens. Keystone Chief, say it, Commissioner Mayor Vito, say it loud, but who is listening? Aaron, thank you to everyone for supporting mental health in our community.
And I want to tell you some good news. One of the things that the Commissioners did recently is when we, when we switched the lease at the Sharwell to Third Street Plaza, it's going to free up $340,000 a year for mental health and intellectual disabilities. And we did that, the 3 of us did that along with the folks up in Clinton County, so that's going to put money into our community for mental health services. And obviously, as, as my colleague said, we have to push at the state and federal level to make sure that that funding, just so people understand, children and youth is a needs-based fund. You get what you need in each community. Mental health is fixed. The state gives you X amount of dollars, and that's it. And that's what's wrong, right? Because we need a needs-based formula on the mental health side. If we in rural communities have a higher percentage of people who are struggling with mental health illnesses, we need to get more money. We can't exist in a world where the state says, you get, you know, X amount of money and that's it. If you have deterioration, it's up to you. We are doing our bit by freeing up money, but that doesn't solve the problem long term. So when you go and you see your state and federal officials, tell them that. Ask them that. Challenge them to say, hey. Right? We do that on the children and youth side because we still have the belief that children are special and innocent, but all life is special and innocent, and especially people who are struggling. That would be like saying, you know, sorry, you got diabetes, we're cutting you off. We're not going to do any more research, we're not going to do anything.
And with the increased demand of mental health services, we need more counselors.
Right.
And it's a tough field.
But it can't just be NAMI alone. Everyone who is a voter or not a voter has to talk to elected officials and say, we need to solve the problem. We need help in our, in our prisons and jails to have resources. So anyway, picture, yes.
Want to come back up?
You look great. One more before I give up the part. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next proclamation, I'm sorry.
Proclamation Institutional Parole and Correctional Employee, May 7 through 13. Whereas Pennsylvania correctional system is the oldest, not latest, is the oldest in the nation, evolving from the establishment of Philadelphia's Walnut Street Jail in 1773 and the Eastern Penitentiary in 1829. And whereas the Pennsylvania system, as it became known, was the leading influence in the development of peology throughout the 19th century and the forerunner of modern corrections. And whereas today Pennsylvania faces continued difficult challenges in corrections, with 23 state correctional institutions, 1 motivational boot camp, 1 training academy, 2 central office buildings, 10 community correction centers, 23 contract facilities, 63 county prisons and jails, and 10 federal facilities and offices. Our correctional facilities house approximately 70,639 inmates. And whereas the secure and safe operation and management of those facilities
Okay, our next proclamation, Commissioner Sartre.
Proclamation Institutional Parole and Correction Employee Week, Day 7 through 13. Whereas Pennsylvania correctional system is the oldest, not latest, glaringly, is the oldest in the nation, evolving from the establishment of Philadelphia's Walnut Street Jail in 1773 and the Eastern Penitentiary in 1829. And whereas the Pennsylvania system, as it became known, was the leading influence in the development of pediology throughout the 19th century and the forerunner of modern corrections. And whereas today Pennsylvania faces continued difficult challenges in corrections, with 23 state correctional institutions, one motivational boot camp, one training academy, two central office buildings, 10 community correction centers, 23 contract facilities, 63 county prisons and jails, and 10 federal facilities and offices. Our correctional facilities house approximately 70,639 inmates. And whereas the secure and safe operation and management of those facilities rests in the hands of every 31,500 trained, skilled, and dedicated correctional professionals. They are corrections administrators, corrections officers, counselors, treatment specialists, educators, clerical staff, business administrators, and purchasing agents, personnel and labor relations specialists, reentry specialists, social workers, clergy, medical professionals, food service specialists, computer technicians, parole agents, parole supervisors, administrators, physicians, planners, and research analysts, and skilled craftsperson upon whose skills, efficiencies, and professionalism allows the Pennsylvania correctional system to function. And whereas although each of these dedicated professionals work in a different field and specializes in a specific area, all are committed to a common goal. The secure, safe, and humane operation of our Commonwealth's correctional facilities, where employees work to reduce future crime through the delivery of programs to change individuals' criminal behavior. Now therefore, the commissioners of Lycoming County hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2023, as Institutional Parole and Corrections Employee Week in Lycoming County. We encourage all citizens to recognize the crucial role these dedicated professionals play in ensuring the effective operation of our Pennsylvania correctional systems in the interest of public safety. Signed by Scott Medsker, Chairman, Tony Masera, Vice Chairman, and Rick Narabito, Secretary.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Being the chairman of the prison, prison port, we've seen a lot of different things. We understand the challenges that, that face our community, for sure. Before I was commissioner, I was probably one of the ones that said, "Lock them up, man, just lock them up." And you gotta be tough. You don't want prisons to be easy. And as you saw, well, as we evolved and trying to understand why they're in our facilities, you start to realize that you have to attack this on many fronts. You know, employees, correctional officers, all of them that I read in the proclamation, have a very, very difficult job. Very difficult. Especially when our states stop funding mental health increases, especially when they shut down institutionals, institutions for mental health. Where are they? Or they're on your streets and they will commit crimes, not by choice, and they will end up in our facilities. And some of the stories and some of the photos, some of the videos that I've seen, it's just too, too many to describe, but it's sad. It's very sad. And so, you know, when we talk to the warden and we're going over some of those challenges, you know, his first thought is always for the safety of the inmates and the safety of his staff. That's his job. And I would like to say right now that you do a great job in that, Warden, and your whole staff does. So we appreciate everything that you provide for not only the citizens, but, but for the
Yeah, you know, so one important thing is for us to always try to re, and, and this, this is so difficult because we do try to keep track in the, in the prison of folks who have mental health histories, but I think as a community, we don't want to associate everyone with a mental health issue, and I know that's not what you're saying, Commissioner, but we also don't want to associate everyone with a mental health issue as being someone who may commit crime or that everyone who commits crime has a mental health issue. We do track in the prison a system and we know there are a significant number of people, but we also have some people who just choose to do what they want to do. If they want to rob a bank, they rob a bank and they, you know, the question becomes, why does someone continuously rob a bank when they've been incarcerated? And that's one that, that Rob Reed brought to our attention, that maybe trauma and other kinds of experiences people have contribute to it. But the folks who work in our prisons today have to be so multifaceted, right? They have to be, they have to have the ability to be both compassionate and to not be taken advantage of. They have to be firm, but at the same time, try to be empathetic. And we do have to understand, I think, as, as Commissioner Masera said, that it's a very difficult job. Sometimes on the outside, we're quick to judge. We need to make sure they have the resources to do their work. So for example, we have, as the chairman of the prison board mentioned, we've done things on salaries and compensation to attract the best qualified people, to make sure we can attract people. You know, we, we have done work with the crisis intervention training so that before people come to the prison, our, people in the community who are working, our enforcement people can identify and try to de-escalate situations. So we are trying to do things. It's a continuous process of us growing and learning. And quite frankly, you know, any of us, when we come into this job as commissioners, we're not like born with an instant brain full of all the corrections and about mental health. And I, I say that because we're going to have two new commissioners coming in. But I think what's important is our ability to listen and certainly our meetings with the folks at the, at the prison, we try to do that. We do want to thank you. It is, it is the kind of job that people take for granted in the community, you know, that, that they don't realize. I think sometimes we have to ask ourselves too and challenge ourselves as a community about sometimes why we lock people up for so long and sometimes. And that's a conversation we need to have because we saw certainly as our population escalated, Mr. Masera, right? And you experienced that even more so than later in these, the terms. We get, we get to a situation of prison overcrowding and are there alternatives where people should be? So anyway, thank you all for what you do and continue to push us, to challenge us, to give you what's needed to get the job done.
I've worked with a lot of you firsthand for many, many years next door and talk to you daily. I was in that prison pretty much every day and I saw what you experienced and what you went through. And it's got, it's got worse with COVID and staffing and, and many, many challenges that the prison board had to address and tried to accomplish some difficult tasks and, and a lot of these things have been highlighted. We want to thank you for what you do because it's a very, very tough profession. And it, it goes back to individuals make mistakes. These are human beings. They, majority of them want to do what's right. They just need to be directed in the right path. That's why we, we stay in this field in the past. That's why I stayed in it, to try to help people. Those successes, they do happen, you know? It's rewarding because you might run into them later and they thank you. And you say, "You don't need to thank me because you did the work. Just needed the direction to go." And it reminds me of something that happened last night and having the empathy and not, not so much what a person wants, but what a person needs. And I was at the Brotherhood Alliance Dinner last night and one of the gentlemen that was honored was talking about his father. And his father grew up in a depression and they had a produce stand and the good fruit would come in twice a week. And he had a really nice apple one day and he said, "The apples usually came in from Upper New York State." And he says, he's walking, he's seven years old, this is his father. He, he sees a homeless man on his side on the sidewalk, which was a common, common sight back in the depression. And so he, he thought about it. He went over and he laid his apple next to this gentleman and he ran because he didn't know what the reaction was going to be. So the next day he's thinking, "Should I go back and should I see what happens? Should I talk to him?" So he walked back in that direction. This time the gentleman was still there and he was sitting up and he said to him, "Did you enjoy your apple?" And the gentleman opened his mouth and went, "Ah, ah, ah, ah." He didn't have any teeth. And the apple's sitting there. And he thought, "Oh my goodness." He ran home and he got two bananas for the gentleman. He says, "It's not often we think, we know what's best for a person. We think that we know what a person wants. We think that we know what a person needs and we never ask. We never ask, 'What are your needs?'" You know, talk to them, get their version of what they need, their, have the empathy to have a conversation. We do this with our kids. We think we know what our kid knows, what's best for our kid. We don't sit there and ask them, "What do you want?" We're all guilty of it.
Stay up all night and just hang out, right? That's what they want.
Not going that far, but listen, listen to them because it's important to hear people and what they have to say. You don't have to agree with them, but have the empathy to let them speak and hear, hear their piece. So that's part of being in the prison system. Getting to know the inmate and talking with them, trying to meet their needs, which that's what the prison does, so that they don't come back as a repeat visitor. And they become productive and they pay taxes and they have work and, and they do what's best for the community. So that's what you're doing. We want to thank you for your work. Warden, we'd like you to come up and say a few words if you'd like to.
You know, Warden, I think it might be helpful, and I don't know if you have it off the top of your head or if Chris, Deputy Warden Ebner has it, just to tell the public when you, when people come in, the number who report a prior mental health, the percentages, rough percentages of how many report a prior mental health incident within the last year. Yeah, how many are on medications? How many are on psycho, very, very strong psychotropic medications? Because it especially will help us understand the relationship between how the jails have become the de facto mental health centers.
Yeah, the statistics do vary, but in general, we'll see about an average of 25% of the population that's on psychotropic medications. And that's just from the self-reporting that they're doing upon commitment. But we're probably seeing at least 50 or more percent of our population that are, have experienced within the last year, some, some form of mental health issues. And then an even higher percentage of that that have had some mental health issues in their lifetime. So it's, it's very, and there's a correlation and it's probably very fitting and I don't know that it's done on purpose, but to be speaking about mental health today and also corrections, the, the two are so intertwined. And, and it's not something that has been given a lot of focus in the past. It's certainly something that's coming to the forefront now and in, in ways on trying to reduce jail populations, trying to address mental health before people come to jail, trying to address mental health concerns in the community in hopes to not incarcerate people. Because oftentimes there is a punitive side to incarceration, but it doesn't always need to be punitive. There can be some therapy in there and I think there's that switch. We're seeing a switch from jails being punitive to now being therapeutic and trying to, trying to reduce recidivism, trying to keep people out of jails or keep them from coming back. Yeah, I mean, it's really an honor for me to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the staff. And I think it's important, when you read the proclamation, people say, "Oh, it's Corrections and Correction Officers Week." Well, yes, it is Correction Officers Week, but it's also Correction Employee Week. And that means so many different people. And there's a lot of professionals in here today, both current corrections employees and we have a former corrections employee in the back that is somebody still involved in our system and, and helping with the, the mental health with Deputy Warden Mahoney.
Is he an inmate?
He is, he is not.
Not yet.
But those, those professionals, they include security staff, maintenance staff, treatment staff, medical staff, food service staff. Jails are, are a unique and often misunderstood facility. And what happens on a daily basis and how much goes on in the volunteers, administration, our, our work release center and our, our work crew forming and, and the security staff out there, these are people that are, that are dedicated. And you wouldn't understand that until you've seen what we've been through for the last couple of years with COVID and the reduction in the staff. It's, it's not, it's not a secret. It's not unique to Lycoming County. Corrections across the country has struggled with staffing issues. And there's been people that have worked themselves tirelessly. They, they've just been pulling so many shifts, double shifts, overtime, just to keep places running because jails didn't shut down due to COVID. The operations didn't change. It was the dynamic and the people that were maintaining those operations. There's incredible determination on their part. And, and probably the most important part is professionalism. I, I don't believe that people understand how much professionalism there is, how much empathy there is in jail settings. When, when you're dealing with inmates, it's not about just locking them up. It's not about just the punitive side to it. So we, we've seen, I, I hope that we've turned a corner. I feel like we've turned a corner and, and COVID's kind of in our, in our rearview mirror. We've started to return to some more normal operations. We, we're starting to bring in some more programming that was in there before and get back to where we were and, and try to achieve what our, our goal is and our mission is. The one thing that I, I guess I want to end with is just acknowledging those professionals that support us. The Board of Chair, the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners, the, the prison board. And we have some prison board members in the back here today. The court system and the support that they provide to us, the other county government agencies, almost every county government office somehow or another deals with the prison system. And, and that occurs on a daily basis with those offices. And then our outside partners, NAMI's a good example. The, the volunteers and the agencies that we work with on a daily basis that understand what our mission is, but that we can't accomplish it without them. In recognition of this proclamation, we will be acknowledging our staff with a meal next week at the prison and at the pre-release center. And it's just a small token of our appreciation for all the hard work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden.
You know, Warden, you should tell the public who is on the prison board because you're absolutely right. That board meets every month. These are, we have the controller who's back in the room, Ms. Krista Rogers. We have the district attorney, right? We have, who's not here, he's obviously in court probably. We have the sheriff, Mr. Lusk, who's here. We have the president judge, Butts. We have the three commissioners.
That's the seven member.
That's the seven member.
Yes.
And, and I hope that in the future, when we do these proclamations, they do them at the same time because I think it's a great opportunity to educate the public about the things that you, you mentioned and the relationship and how we can work towards a better community. A prison is a microcosm of the society and what happens in the prison is a reflection of what we are about in our community. So to the extent that we are in our community, a community that tries to grow and, and do the things that my colleagues mentioned, be empathetic, I think that's a reflection on us. So we, we want to thank you all. We really do.
And we continue to look for workers in this field. You know, it's, it's a problem that's not just here, it's national. We've all heard recently the, the tragic story down in Texas where the immigrant that was not here legally was shooting a gun in his yard. The neighbors next door went over and said, "Hey, we have a one-month-old baby. Could you please stop shooting?" And he proceeded to murder five of them. It's a very large county. It's a rural county like Lycoming County. Our, Lycoming County is the largest geographical county in the state. They have six officers patrolling that whole county. The officers that were on duty were on an aggravated robbery charge. And they get a phone call that there's a gentleman shooting in his yard. The robbery charge, the robbery call trumps. Somebody's shooting in the yard. As soon as they heard there was victims, it took one hour with their lights and sirens on to get to the scene. The sheriff's on, he says, "What am I to do? I don't have the manpower." The prison's 28 employees, they're down 11. It's going on everywhere and we need people. So we have jobs here in Lycoming County. We try to promote them the best we do. We have a great package. And the Wellness Center benefits salary is, is, is good. It's one of the top and if not the top for fifth-class counties. And it's a very tough field, but we're, we're very aware of the situation, but we also have a budget. We have to live within our budget. Okay, thank you. We'd like to get a picture of everybody. We'd like to get a picture of everybody. Corrections employees, come on up.
Do you want maybe the tall folks to go with the ward?
I'm not tall folks.
That's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to say.
Harry Rogers, Intensive Bill Supervisor would like to say a few words.
I just feel totally compelled, because we're talking about two elements here. It's very important to the prison, mental health and the prison itself. But one of the aspects that we have going on in the prison, and we have to thank our warden for and noticing the need that's going on in the prisons. A few years ago, Warden Ebner came to me, and he says, I want you to start handling, working on a way to deal with these mental health people, trying to get them out and get them the help they need. And running supervised bales is a very stressful situation as it is, but then you add people with mental health illness. And that's crazy. And I didn't mean no pun there, I apologize if I offended anybody. But it was a rough undertaking. And I want to say thank you to Chris. And I also want to say thank you to my officers, who helped put together a plan for dealing with these people. We've earned a reputation in the community amongst the mental health communities as the Whispers. Because we seem to be able to do things that nobody else was able to do, keeping these people out of jail. And I think those gentlemen need to be acknowledged, and what the prison's doing with mental health needs to be acknowledged. And I want to invite the future set of commissioners to dig down deep on what is not necessarily writing money, but also looking at ways of expanding what we do. Because it's a costly event to keep these people in prison and not get them the treatment they need, because the prison can't afford it and aren't set up to do it. And then when we turn these people back to the community, they become a costly event to your constituents. It's a costly event, not only just on the economics, but the moral fiber of our community. Because it's only going to get worse until we deal with it. And if we don't deal with it in an effective manner, we're all going to lose. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the honor, and appreciate the time.
Thank you. I would just like to add that, Chris, since you've been with the prison, which has been 20 years now, you were probation for more than 10, and then now with the prison. This has been something that's been a passion of yours, that you have really been the driving force to make sure that things aren't left unseen or undone. And when it starts to not be talked about, you're the one who brings it back to the table and drives that train. So we want to thank you.
And you know, Mr. Harry Rogers brings up a good point. Because when people are in the prison, their medical care becomes a cost to the taxpayers locally. If we keep them out of prison and they happen to be on Medicaid or Medicare, we can get them the services they need paid by the federal government. And when they're incarcerated, it's paid by the local taxpayers. So it's in our interest, as Harry's saying, to try to keep people, not just financially, but also because it doesn't break up the continuity of care, which is what I think he's talking about.
Supervised bail is an element by which we can stop, create a stopgap for a criminal event and repeating it on the streets.
Right.
And get them the treatment they need. And it takes a lot of work, a lot more time than we're used to do under our own demographics of treating and supervising clients. It's a wholly, totally different package. And it's kind of like a lot of talking, a lot of talking, and a lot of time spent on individuals. And that's because all cases aren't black and white, there's so much gray area. And with that gray area, we're not dealing with it, that's what's going to hurt us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron asks, how do we volunteer for NAMI? And so, Aaron, if you email kgordon, G-O-R-D-O-N, at joiner.org, they'll get you set up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for wanting to be involved.
All right, moving on to bid opening. Krista.
Morning, Krista.
Morning. This is for the Williamsport Region Relief, Well Rehabilitation and Replacement Project in the Borough of South Williamsport and the City of Williamsport. We have one bidder, the Linde Corporation, L-I-N-D-E. And the submitted amount is $11,180,542.
Would you appreciate that?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, Maya, can you remember the original? Can you?
It was around $3,000.
$3 million. And I don't know where, we're supposed to come up with the money. And I mean, we really do appreciate our legislators and everyone who's working. But the more money you seem to get, the more money they charge. And it is, I guess it is a very special field. And there's probably a tremendous amount of liability. And that's my guess. You know, obviously, you know, the materials have gone up, but not that much. Okay? So it's the liability. And if we don't have reform toward reform, if we don't have that type of legislation to stop this nonsense, right? How can our people afford this? And this is just one small cost.
It's not a small cost.
In comparison to what the whole project will cost in the end, it's not even 10%.
So the planning directors here, Ms. Rosman, maybe what you all can do is, when you get us that, break it down for us so we can see where the costs are going. And to the extent that we can do anything to work with, because we only have one bidder, and we're trying to, we could put it at the bid again, but every time we do that, we seem to get a higher bid. So maybe if you can give us a breakdown, we can look specifically and see if there's ways we can try to cut some of those costs.
The bid is actually broke down per the different job, but for the sake of making sure there was no error, I just put a total cost in. But yes, in part of their submittal, they'll have to provide that breakdown. So that'll be available for everyone to view.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, to the commissioner's point, I'm curious what they have in there for their liability insurance policy, and what they have in for wages, and what they have in for materials and everything. So.
Moving on to reports, Kaylin, counts payable, cash requirements, three.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
First, I have presented for your ratification, our invoices due through May 10, 2023, to be paid on May 3, 2023, in the amount of $1,102,107.13. The breakdown is as follows, with 52.10% being funded by the general fund 42.44% is being funded by grants and other sources at $467,756.46. And 5.45% is being funded by RMS at $60,109.12.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
No, so just comment, here's an interesting thing. One of the costs, diamond drugs, $20,715. That's the March 2023 meds that were dispensed at the prison.
At the prison, yes.
Just at the prison. So that's to the point that we mentioned earlier about the extent that people are not in the prison. We're not paying for those drugs if they're outside, they're getting them.
Any comments? Here you go.
I'm sorry.
Motion?
Oh, I'll move to approve.
Second. On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, next I have presented for your ratification is jury panel number eight, to be paid on May 3, 2023, in the amount of $3,392.20. And this is being funded 100% by the general fund.
Did you say 390, or the sheet says 890? Is that jury?
The sheet that I have that printed that went out for signature should have been 3,392.20.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that what you have?
No, it's written 890, but that's okay.
Could be a typo.
It's a typo. Yeah, on your agenda. Don't worry, it's no problem.
You guys had me so confused, I did my job.
No, you did your job.
A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, and finally, I have presented for your ratification is the April 2023 Poll Worker Training, to be paid on May 3, 2023, in the amount of $11,312.18.
Any kind of motion?
I'll move to approve.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, thank you, Kaylin.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I need to make one quick change, just because Shannon's cutting 11 o'clock. So we're going to jump to your action, item 6.9 through 6.11. Okay. Morning, Shannon.
Good morning, commissioners. For 6.9, this is to approve the agreement with Larson Design Group. They're going to be working with the conservation district on the educational pavilion that we're looking to put out at the county farm. This is for them to work with us from basically from start to finish to work on the design and bid packaging for that.
In our ARPA plan that we've developed, the three commissioners, the $22 million, we've allocated a million dollars for agriculture to address the farmers' agricultural needs in the area. One of the ideas that they brought to us was a site that they could go to out on the county farm to do educational training.
Right, and right now, they really don't have anywhere to do this educational training. And a lot of the stuff that they do also includes outdoor-type of events, equipment or a type of tilling practice. And by having this, it's going to be large enough to have a larger event. It can also be used by the master gardeners, who also do educational events, and it will be right next to the master garden, in addition to other outdoor event possibilities for that area. So it'll be a well-used facility.
Whoever has not visited the gardens up there is beautiful. They've done a tremendous job.
And they're making improvements right now. I think they're putting in a paved pathway.
Yes.
Yes, for EDA accessibility.
And they actually have several weddings up there. Maybe the pavilion could be used for reception in the future. And it's a beautiful location for further training and education.
A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Okay, the next item, 6.10. The Williamsport Sewer Authority, they have requested that we apply on their behalf for an Appalachian Regional Commission Area Development Program grant. This is for corridor utility modernization project on the Reach Road in the industrial park area. They had applied last year and had helped them with that also as a pass-through grant. They did not get that funding, but this year they're applying again in hopes of receiving the $500,000. They will be matching it with a million of their own, and then they will also be using some of the ARPA funds that we have given them already. So this is to do all the different lining and replacement work that they need in the Reach Road area.
Okay, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Okay, and the last item I have is 611. And this is, as you know, we're doing the five-county municipal waste plan revision. And due to some staffing issues over the last few years, we're behind on that. So because that was due on February 26, 2023, we requested it back in the fall that DEP give us a time extension. And that is what you have before you. It's the consent order and agreement that says we will have our plan completed and adopted by the county by February 26 of 2024. So we have staff now, our newer staff are working out very well, and Alexa Vixel is helping with this plan. And we should be able to meet that time frame without a problem. And we have our other four partner counties are also signing this agreement too.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. Information, 4.1 in mind.
Yeah, just announcing that we're going to be going out to bid for roof replacement, part of the TSP project that we're doing for the facility's management.
Okay, thank you. We have some individuals here from the Lycoming Arts. Would you like to present something or information, or would you like to wait to public comment?
We'll go now, if you let us.
Yeah, we don't want to keep you here much longer, if you don't, I'm sure you're very busy.
Parking meters.
Parking meters, yeah.
We have to extend that.
So thank you for being at our meeting.
Good. My name is Joy Walsh, and I'm with Lycoming Arts. Lycoming Arts is a non-profit organization that consists of all volunteers. And Judy Olinsky is with me also. And I'd like to read the letter that we're sending to you. We all know that Williamsport is a great place to live. This was reinforced recently when Nathan Riker, State Director of the New Office of Outdoor Recreation, was here to talk about the lifestyle and economic benefits of outdoor education. Health, mental health, lifestyle, environmental concerns are all improved by outdoor education, outdoor recreation. According to the Sun Gazette article on April 13, "It also improves quality of life that attracts residents and businesses and community prosperity that is built on sustainable use of natural assets." As for the economic punch, outdoor recreation added $14 billion to the state economy in 2021. The Sun Gazette also points out the relationship between outdoor recreation and the arts and humanities. Or as we at Lycoming Arts say, an art town is a river town is a trail town.
It's our new motto.
It's a great motto.
Williamsport, Lycan County, is in a unique position to take advantage of the opportunity offered by Pennsylvania's developing outdoor recreation sector. Our arts, specifically, Lycan Arts, have been preparing our city and our county for this moment for the past twenty-five years. Williamsport in the early nineties had reached a critical stage in a process of urban decay. Lycan Arts saw that our cultural assets, our arts and our history, positioned us to develop the national cultural tourism brand, Art Town. With support from the county's Art Town two thousand and ten, the city's Main Street Program, and the Williamsport Business Association, Lycan Arts designed, managed, and promoted programs such as First Friday and Public Art Works. These are programs that definitely enhance and market our cultural assets. Our relationship to Art Towns involved us in the Riverwalk development and the origin of the Susquehanna-Greenways partnership. A representative, Lycan Arts Board member, attended the meeting where the county planner introduced the Lycan, the Susquehanna-Greenway concept. The Art Town that was being built was a Susquehanna-Greenway partnership, River Town. An art town is a river town is a major cultural tourism market. At a recent Trail Town meeting sponsored by the Greenway, the presenter from the Allegheny Trail Alliance said the trail was an outdoor project, but then noticed the rise in economic development in towns along the trail. The nightlife in Williamsport enhances the outdoor enthusiast visits. Our Lycan Arts Board then realized, "An art town is a river town is a trail town." The two thousand and sixteen County Comprehensive Plan acknowledged the depth and potential economic development effect of the arts and cultural assets of our area. However, cautioned in the County Comprehensive Plan, this asset is based on volunteer work. Without planning, the state made fourteen billion dollars in outdoor recreation in two thousand and twenty-one. The state, wanting to safeguard and develop this asset, has created an office of outdoor recreation and appointed a director. The volunteers of Lycan Arts have built an art town, and the county plan says we need a director to safeguard and enhance this asset. Remember, an art town is a river town is a trail town. The state of Pennsylvania is committed to the development of outdoor recreation. As the Riverwalk is extended and trails developed, Lycan Arts has worked for over twenty-five years to position our county and our city to present the cultural tourism that will enable us to take advantage of these opportunities as a river town. In two thousand and sixteen, the county plan recognized cultural tourism and Lycan Arts as a major economic development asset. The county plan counseled the need for a paid director for Lycan Arts to sustain the management needed to protect our cultural tourism assets. The current Pennsylvania state commitment to outdoor recreation reinforced the findings of the county plan, and art town is a river town is a trail town. We'd like you to please consider supporting Lycan Arts as promoting cultural tourism, which will bring further economic development to our area. Specifically, we're asking for sixty thousand dollars for, per year, for a two-year period to hire a paid professional, Lycan Arts director. We want to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Well, no, I, one of the reasons we wanted to come before you is to not only know, let you know that we have been working on this, but this is a really important piece of information for everybody in our county to have. This is three major marketing portals for our county, that we, what we have developed here just needs to be connected to these portals, and that's like, uh, you know, an opportunity that we're not actually paying cash for, because on the ground, we've developed all the things that are part of it. And so, minimally, we want you to know that information. And also, as she's, we've said before, um, we've had this unique, uh, relationship to the Susquehanna-Greenways and to the county planning department all these years, and because of that information, we knew where this was going, and we've been able to get the county ready to meet this moment. So, whether it's through us or another way, it is important that the county know that this is a moment, that this is an opportunity for us. All of the assets that we have and our people, you know, this is a way for us to make more economic development, to take care of the mental health, to take care of feeding people, to take care of all these things. I mean, we bring joy and we help with the mental health issues because we make people feel better about life and more included, but at this moment in time, because of what's happening in our country, the, this development of world prosperity through the arts and creative sector, we are also poised to make money for you. That's what we're talking about. And whether it's through us or through you or an office, this is something that should be an ongoing discussion, because this is a great opportunity. I'm sorry, you, you wanted to speak, sir?
No, well, first of all, I noticed also Debbie Birch.
Yes, Debbie, she's the president of Lycan Arts.
So, um, you know, Commissioner Messer spoke once about a visit he had to, um, what was that?
Down, uh, like, not length, it's true, um.
John.
Levin.
Thorpe.
Yeah, Jim Thorpe.
Jim Thorpe, right. And talk about that, I mean, the experience you saw there.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was quite impressive. I was never there after all these years of hearing about Jim Thorpe, never really cared to go until I got there. And then it was, uh, I mean, I couldn't believe how many tourists came in just by train. You know, there were six, six thousand people that came on the train that day alone, you know, one way and one way out. Uh, so it did open our eyes. It did show us the trails. We, we ride bikes, you know, so we went under the trails. Uh, it, it gives yourself, your county, an opportunity to showcase what you have by the arts and by, you know, tourism. So, I believe that, uh, we discussed this.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in pretty good detail, and, and looked at ARPA to see what we could do.
We, we, I think we certainly will look. I see what you're proposing to us is to do an incubator for two years at sixty thousand a year with the hope that the person that you hire would be able to generate through grants an income stream.
We believe that's possible.
Right, and I know that the state is making a lot of grants available because they recognize now that tourism is probably behind agriculture, our second-largest, uh, source of revenue. I could, I don't know, I think that's the case. Uh, but I think hopefully, I think we can discuss this because, you know, we are, we are facing the repopulation issue.
Maya.
Sorry.
Can you stay here for a minute?
Yeah. I just got eleven thirty, that's why.
Okay.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Okay.
So, this whole issue of the repopulation of the county is so important, and I think that the experience that Commissioner Messer describes is that when you bring six thousand people somewhere, are they gonna all live there? No, but will you get one percent of them who might decide, "I'm coming back"? I mean, that's kind of our theory behind the ballpark. There's a lot of money being committed to the ballpark because our theory is that if we bring in three hundred thousand people a year and, and one percent of them return, that's three thousand, and one percent of them decide to settle here, three hundred people that will get it. Well, the same thing goes with our arts and with our culture, and with the rail town is a trail town is a river town.
An art town is a river town is a trail town.
Okay.
It's interesting that you chose Jim Thorpe, because one of the examples we use is, is Cooperstown where the baseball.
Yes.
Hall of Fame is.
Commissioner Messer.
Well, that's like, our national brand is, is Little League, but when people go to Cooperstown, if you go to their website, they have an art town that backs up it. So, we're poor, I mean, we have so many elements, but we need to work harder at bringing those elements together and creating a unified, uh, effort. I mean, we did write a plan about, we called it hitting it out of the park, because again, our major, our national brand is Little League baseball, but in this, in this market, this tourist market, people expect there to be a, a restaurants and, uh, you know, theaters and music and art, that it's part of the whole package. And we have all of the elements, and it's just a matter of, we need to be more organized at putting those elements together and promoting them, so.
Yeah, and we'd like to invite you to come to First Friday tomorrow, um, downtown. We have, um, Gabe Stillman is going to present music, the Williamsport High School bands, there are four different groups that are going to be performing also, and we have over eighty vendors that have signed up to exhibit, so, um, it's gonna be busy tomorrow night.
I know, I understand that there are three times as many vendors as there were, I think, a year ago.
When we started out, um, last season, we were roughly in the thirty-five to forty vendors, maybe at the top. Most of the time, we were getting like twenty to twenty-five vendors. By the end of, by the middle to the end of the season last year, we had eighty-six vendors that were coming every month, in addition to bringing in three different bands. We're bringing, I mean, we were estimating, because we don't have a way to actually count, we were estimating based on our crowds, we got drones and stuff to fly over, um, three thousand people plus coming First Friday every month. That's bringing a lot of people into this town.
Right.
And that's supporting a lot of local businesses. Um, this year, we've added a tremendous amount of advertising well outside of our area, and we've also added the William, the Taste of Williamsport, which is now allowing every restaurant the opportunity to participate, and they're doing small plates and samplings, getting people to try these places that they might, for whatever reason, be afraid to go into because they're not sure they're gonna like it, and they're afraid it's too expensive, or whatever their reason might be, but they're gonna come in and they're gonna have an opportunity for five dollars to try these, these restaurants, and each one will do a different sampling, and they'll, they'll charge whatever, but it's gonna be a five-dollar, like, basically rate to try different things. And so, it's allowing, we're, we're working with our businesses, we're working with the people, the artists and artisans, and with the musicians, and we, I mean, people that come here are just blown away. We had Oswego New York come down to see what we were doing here because they thought it was so cool, Oswego New York. So, they came down here last year, and they wanted us to show them how to do this. And, I mean, we have the restaurants, we have the river, we have the businesses, we have the sports, we have musicians, we have the arts, we have everything here.
We need to pull it all together.
We do.
We really wanna thank you three, because you have been tireless, and all the, with the, the men and the women, because we've met with other folks, um, from the organization at other times.
So, Commissioner, the reason I asked Maya to stay, uh, she has to leave.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. Now, this is being considered under ARPA, but you've also asked for Act thirteen, so, uh, if you would like to put a request in for Act thirteen monies to be considered for this project, Maya is the person to contact.
Okay.
Because she's, uh, she streams it all, and then brings it to the commissioner for consideration.
And I'll talk to them about it. Okay. If you go to our website, there's a grant funding request email, you just put it there, and it'll, and it'll come directly to, to me. Yep. Okay.
And we'll, and we'll take this up also, and, but, but really, thank you for coming. I think what you're telling us is there's a movement out there, the state has created this recreation office, there's a movement, there's money behind it, we need to hop and get on ourselves together and organize because we have the infrastructure.
Right.
We need to pull it together and go after that money, and, and go after getting the people here. We really appreciate what you're doing, and we appreciate you coming.
The only question I would have would be sustainability for the future, whether the, the position, is it a part-time or full-time position?
Well, we, uh, we're not sure at this point.
We'd like to have full-time, but in order to sustain that, part of, we're hamstrung a little bit because there are grants we can go after, but you must have someone in place to even go after those.
Right, to go after the grants, we, right, we get that, and, and we have one point two million dollars in hotel tax money, and we think we can have a conversation about that because of, this is a pittance, but it would bring an opportunity for them to get more. And I, I see UCC, Jason, think on this at the chamber and the hotel tax, and we'll work together. We'll work together.
We've been trying, trying, trying to make this happen, and I'm, you know, we're all working a lot of hours that.
Volunteering.
Yeah.
Yeah, we get that.
And, um, and we could do so much more.
Right.
Somebody who was able to just really, and it's to the benefit of the area.
Absolutely.
Have you had any conversations with the city, the chamber, or the foundation?
We've had conversations.
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Ladies, if you go on lycan.org left side, you'll see the tab for, uh, grant cost or grant opportunities.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your time, yes.
You're welcome.
All right, personnel actions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions. For the Patronatary's Office, Ruth Diaz is transferring to a civil processing clerk position, full-time replacement at eighteen fifty-eight per hour, and she's anticipated to transfer on May fourteenth.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve, now, second.
Thank you.
On their side?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I've got Maya's actions, uh, six point one. Commissioner seeking your approval on the intergovernmental agreement with River Valley Transit Authority in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This is a two thousand and twenty-three budgeted item.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Commissioner seeking your approval for the amendment to your agreement with DNA Diagnostic Center. Uh, this is a two thousand and twenty-three budgeted item.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, Malik.
How are you, Malik, how you doing?
Presenting an item for Steph, and Rochelle is also here as well. Seeking your approval for the grant monitoring agreement with Steph Inc. in the amount of ten thousand dollars as Act thirteen funded. This is for the two eleven program to help facilitate case management with families. Yes.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Rochelle, you like to say anything?
Uh, these ones specifically are gonna help with the two-one-one walk-in, and so, prior, um, we actually had some state funding, uh, but that has been gone, and we are still having people who need to get onto the two-one-one queue, and so this will actually help support, um, our staff to get people onto the queue so they can come off of homelessness and be put in an appropriate place.
Right.
And so, this is, this will probably be multi-year that we'll be able to utilize this, but it's something that's really important because if we didn't commit to this and coordinate this, uh, that would be actually outside, we would not have a walk-in location in Lycan County, and it would probably be outside of our, our county, and most individuals who are homeless do not have transport, and it, it's a very good thing to keep it here. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for what you do, and please thank your staff from us also.
Thank you.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Uh, is Beth on the line?
I am.
Six point four, you got it?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I seek your approval on a license agreement between the county and Muncie Borough Municipal Authority. This is to lease space for a, um, radio equipment on their water tank at the Kellogg's property, along with a shelter on the ground there. Um, we will be paying them five hundred dollars a year to lease this space, along with, um, fees that we'll have to pay to have an analysis done on the water tank before and after installation of the, um, equipment.
Okay, maybe this is a two thousand and twenty-three budgeted item, so.
This is a budgeted item, sir.
Okay, and I have a motion?
Oh, I'll move.
Second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye. So, carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, six point five, Carrie? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here for approval on, uh, the purchase of some eight-inch pipe, HDPE, that we utilize in our gas system and continue to expand our gas system as landfill grows, uh, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, um, this is through, uh... In the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, this is through Co-Stars, and it is a budgeted item.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gary, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Every time we're expanding that, putting in more pipes and new wells, can you give us, and you may not have this in your hand, but can you give us information as to the production? Are we creating more gas?
Yeah.
So we are. And, and so what are, like, those, I'm calling them turbines.
Generators.
Generators. What is their capacity? Could we ever, could we ever reach that capacity?
We're getting close right now, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they, each one of them will, the four of them combined is produce about six point four meg, which takes about twenty-two hundred CFM of gas at fifty percent methane, just like gasoline, the, the better the quality of the gas, the less you need, vice versa. And we're, we're creeping up on it. And there's so many other factors that go in, weather, when it gets real dry out, we tend not to produce as much gas, you know, and the landfill's not sealed up as well, so you can't pull as hard. But we're very close. And we've been there before, and kind of things drop off, but not only to continue to, to get more gas for the CoGen plant, it's also a compliance thing, you know, continue to collect that gas, raise some issues for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks.
Six point six and seven, Nancy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Six point six is vote to approve the services agreement with County of Chester. They are the Chester County Youth Detention Center. Security detention is four hundred dollars a day, shelter is two sixty-five, and there's no rate increase from last year.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And six point seven is vote to approve agreement with Justice Works Youth Care. We use their VIP violation initiative program, their diversion program, and a rapid response. There's a whole list of services they use, they offer to us, but there's only, those are the three we use predominantly, and that is, they have a seven point one, seven five percent increase this year.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Nancy, could you, do you know off the top of your head how many youth we have averaged out, usually in placement in other counties or other states?
Uh, right now, I don't believe we have anybody right now.
Okay.
Justice Works is a very effective.
Yes, it is.
Oh, they, they do tremendous work at a relatively inexpensive price for the, for the schools.
Yeah, just checking, we, we don't have anybody in detention.
Okay, good. I have a motion and a second, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
All right, six point eight.
Austin.
Pretty following four.
Yep.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning. Austin, how are you? Good, how are you? Um, so today I have for you a request to conditionally award Kevin Raker construction for the general construction of Bridge Bundling Four. KER was the lowest bidder for this project at one million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Work for this project will consist of three bridge, uh, three bridges, one repair, two replacements. The repair will be Old Smet Road in Fairfield Township, and then the two replacements will be Upper Bodine Road in Lewis Township and Gap Road in Washington Township. We had a pre-call with Kevin Raker's crew, and they're very excited to work with the county. This is their, they've worked with us before on a small job for the prison about a decade ago, but this will be their first big construction job with us. They're very excited to start working up here, and they'll have two crews ready to go as soon as we get the agreement reviewed and, and signed, so. We're very optimistic that this will go to plan, and this will conclude the Bridge Bundling Program as we know it.
Now be it, that's, please, should be seventeen bridges?
Seventeen bridges, and we actually were out, uh, we were out looking at a bridge, Sal Scott and I, in the east end of the county earlier this week, and we stopped by the Upper Fairfield Bridge that was, you know, what we call our free bridge, which is the one that Pendott funded and paid for to be replaced, basically as an in-kind for adopting the five-dollar fee. So the bridge looks great, um, you know, at capacity, it was the day it was raining really badly, but no flooding issues or anything like that. So we also have the bridge in Pine Township that's scheduled to be replaced from Pendott's funds as well, that's entirely managed by them. So at the end of this year, we'll have, I know, at least the seventeen county bridges that were part of our programs, the one out in Upper Fairfield, Pendott did, and then, I don't think Pine Township is slated for this year. It may be, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but what all is said on the Bridge Bundling Program will have gotten nineteen bridges replaced in the county for a little over seven million dollars.
So what's important is continuing this, this program. And, and it won't be easy, by the way. So you're gonna have a brand-new Board of Commissioners. We've seen the success of the program. We had a sustainability strategy in place, and, but that was for ten years, right? And the, the program, what, let me see, this is about the, the second or third year of actual building.
Yep, yep, third year, this will be our third construction season.
Third construction.
We did two bundles last year.
Right, so it's been about five, I don't know how long ago we passed that, maybe six years ago.
I think twenty eighteen, I think, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, five, six years ago.
Think about how much time it took just to get to making the decision.
Right, but, but think about this, so we have another five years of having to collect that fee to pay for the first bundling. So are we, are we just going to wait five years before we start another? And these are decisions that, that the future board's gonna need to make. It's not getting any cheaper. So I, I think a conversation has to sooner than later be discussed about how you're gonna continue the program.
So we have, so, so they have, and they can revisit it with us, they have a plan to try to, it would, it would require us to take some money other than the five-dollar fee, but it could be liquid fuels money. But it's a plan that they put together, and they, they'll bring it back to us, where they, they realize they learn, the staff learned from this, that it's better to get bridges in the early stages repaired, so that municipalities don't just put it off, and then it gets to the point where you can repair it, you have to replace it. And they have a plan that they'll bring to us, which they did kind of bring to us, but they'll bring to us again, where we could kick in some funding, and then, and, and you, you'll remember it when you see it.
No, I, I.
You know about it.
I do remember.
I think you do, I think you're bringing it up to tell us we should pay attention to it.
Yeah.
The three of us.
Yeah.
Right, Commissioner Muster, that's a good point. So we should pay attention to it, and we should look at that, it can happen before the end of this term, before these three guys leave, or two, two, or whatever happens, before this term is up. I don't mean the three of us leaving, you know what I mean. Before we, we, uh, we, we should, we should discuss it, because again, as you said, getting on it sooner than later is really important.
The, the other thing to keep in mind is that, I believe it was this board that, maybe it was the prior one, when we restarted the small bridge inspection program, so we, when we restarted that, as part of that bid that we had put out for, or the RFP that we had put out for the contract for that, was that we included an asset management plan. So when we awarded to Larson, Larson is, we, we've met with them recently, before their, their contract is up next year, they will be comprising all of the bridges that are in our inspection program, and basically, you know, providing a, not a, a walkthrough on how-to, but basically, they're going to provide a list of things that, like, you know, these are things that you should consider in this year, these are things that you should consider in that year. Because they see that, you know, there is a, a large benefit in, in bundling, like repairs, just like we've discussed in the past, so.
Right.
Because, you know, it's a statewide thing that, you know, Pendott has, you know, sort of led the way on, which is that you need to intervene before the bridge deteriorates, because then, once you get into replacements, it's significantly more expensive, but we have a lot of bridges in this county that would fall into a category four, five, or six, which is right on that tipping point. Gets below a four, you're just kind of, you know, putting money into it, you can keep it open, but you're not making it any better. But these fours, fives, and sixes were able to invest smaller amounts of money than a replacement, but what ends up happening is you, you tack on a decade, two decades, three decades onto the lifespan of a bridge, which, you know, saves you significant funds from having to replace it five years down the road. So it's a, it's a really good program that we've, you know, kind of come up with here to partner the Small Bridge Inspection Program with the Bridge Bundling Program. We'll just have to continue to keep being creative on how we implement the, the plans that we come up with.
Okay, thank you, Austin.
Maybe you can bring that to us at our next Commissioner planning.
Yeah, yeah, we will do that. Yeah, we, we just started meeting with them.
And, and Austin, so Pendott held a community information event about a week ago, and I was there, and I, I learned about a program that I never knew they had, which is called, what's that program called?
I don't know, I was at the meeting.
Oh, it's, it's got a weird name. But they, they swap services. The county does this, and Pendott does that for you. And they went through a whole list of examples, Sal was there.
Yeah.
They went through a whole list of examples where counties have said, okay, we'll do this, we'll clean up this highway for you, we'll take care of litter or whatever on this highway, in exchange, Pendott comes in and paves parking lots or whatever. And one of the questions I asked, and I, I'm not sure whether Sal got a chance to follow up, and you can ask him, would they work with us on this bridge repair program in exchange for things we can do for them? And then the, the, and then you're not having to spend your money, you're trading services. It's called All, All Right, or what, what the heck is it called? I forget the name of it, it's got a weird name. But, but maybe you can look at that also and find out from Pendott whether we could trade services with them on, on this repair, or part of it, and then, part of it, maybe we put out to bid or whatever. But Commissioner Muster, absolutely right, we should hop on it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we had, I don't know if there was a vote.
Nah, we don't need to. No, I'm just joking. Did we vote on it?
I, I don't.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion.
We did not.
If the chairman wants a motion, I'll make a motion.
Ask for motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will say one more thing just before I leave. I talked with Britt Bass from Bass Engineering, they worked with P-Sats to work on an article, I believe it's going to be the cover story for the May newsletter that goes out for our program, so we'll get some good press there, hopefully.
Let us look at it, thanks.
Austin, when did you start?
Uh, with the county?
Yeah.
Seven years ago. I was an intern, Kirk Hossman hired me back to be zoning officer.
Yep. You've gone a long way.
Yeah. It's been a long time, it feels a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, comment.
I don't have anything, do you guys?
Oh, we've said enough.
Public comment.
It's supposed to be on the agenda. I did talk to.
Rochelle, what?
Yes, it's okay.
I was kind of worried, she said.
I said it shouldn't be a long meeting, we'll be okay.
You never know.
You never know. So just have two things I wanted to, to bring to the Commissioners' attention. One is ERAP funds, and so where we're at with that, I did send over your latest, you kind of wanted me to come to a meeting every once in a while to give you an update. I did send the April information, that's, you know, up to date. I will say that we will, hopefully, they said very soon, getting the additional five hundred thousand dollars for the ERAP two fund. We will have enough applications to actually complete that, still within the timeframe of twenty twenty-five. So we're, you know, things are going well, we have paid out almost fourteen million dollars, we currently have around five hundred thousand dollars left, and we're looking at an additional five hundred thousand dollars from other counties who weren't able to spend. I do have the payee list, I know in the past when I've come to meetings, you've asked to see the payee list, so I'll pass this around. These are various landlords, as well as utility companies, I think, or this is utility companies too, yeah, this is utility companies as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the ERAP?
No, just, you've done phenomenal.
Can we keep this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So fourteen, fourteen million, I believe I read?
Fourteen million is what we're, we're at right now, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, phenomenal, so. And, and your staff, the limited number you have, what you've done is just, just wondering you guys have any time to do anything else?
We have some great staff in the ERAP program, that is, that is for sure.
Yeah.
So it's pretty great.
Great, thank you.
So the other thing that I have is, I know the Commissioners have been asking with regards to information about the childcare crisis, and so we do have a formal report that we'd like to share with, with you.
Thank you.
So this report that coincides with the day without childcare is a advocacy day and provides information with regards to childcare struggles that families and providers are having within our communities. We have been pushing this information out and directing people to the report. Here, Matt will give you one as well. And so in the Web Weekly, it's on Gazette, various places, they're gonna have, see this QR code, which takes us to the report that provides information. I would say, I think it's very important that, that it's very, it's, it's made known that this is a, a day to understand the struggles of providers and families, and a day of advocacy to see how we can move forward together as a community and to bring, bring it to everyone's attention.
Did you get any word on whether or not STEP has been reauthorized as the Early Learning Resource Center for Region Seven?
So we have a one-year extension due to issues that Okdel is dealing with, and they are continuing to move forward with the, with the proposal plans.
When they're running?
We are, we have a one-year extension, so.
To, to file the?
To actually run the ELRC for another year, but they are still looking at the five-year extension.
Okay.
So I think there is some things on the federal level that is affecting their decision-making for the five-year, so they've made the decision to extend our contract for one year.
Okay, and then.
Yes, we're very hopeful.
But, but in addition to STEP, another entity outside of the county has?
We don't know that.
We don't know for a fact?
They have kind of paused the RFP process.
Yeah.
And said they're continuing to review applications, so once we know about the five years, they've just extended our current contract for a year.
Okay.
And have said that they're gonna continue to work through the five-year contract, and so we did, we did apply, and we put in a, I, I feel a fantastic application on behalf of the, the counties that we represent, and we're hopeful to move that forward for, you know, another five years.
If you could share that application.
I don't think you want to read it.
It's seven hundred pages. But if it's public, I mean, if it can be shared, you could email it, I would be, I would be interested in looking through parts of it, I absolutely would.
Okay, yes, totally, I can totally. I can totally.
Now, I would like to see, now, here's the other thing that occurred, and you may have thought of this, or maybe it's not relevant, but to the extent that the federal government is involved, I think it's worthwhile for you to reach out to Congressman Musser, Senator Casey, and Senator Fetterman and say, listen, it's extremely important that the ELRC stay in this community and not be outsourced to a place where our people have to travel to Belfond.
Yeah.
To get, because that will kill it, they absolutely will not.
Lady on the front of this, she says, I drive a half hour to another town to my child's daycare, then I drive a half hour back to this town where I live and work, this is my only option to stay employed at my job, parent life in County.
Yeah.
Right, there's, you know.
Right. And that's to get, that's to get childcare. The Early Learning Resource Center would even make it more.
Yeah, it would make it worse.
Yeah, but I think you should really reach out to those three federal, maybe.
Yes, we will be sending these reports to all of our legislators and to everyone. You know, just to walk a little bit through the report, the first page talks about slots that have been lost due to facility closures. So in Lecombe County, there has been twelve slots, that means twelve children that have been lost due to facility closures, and three hundred and forty-three slots that have not been able to be enrolled due to lack of staffing. And so if you remember, the proposal that we provided to you was gonna try to affect the staffing shortage to kind of look at various things that we can do with orientation, with the clearances, to really kind of help support providers in a way to kind of build staffing up, because right now we're, they're struggling to be able to open rooms because of that. And then, and then the report just kind of goes through various things as to why we're in crisis, and it has a, a bunch of really great quotes from family members, providers, and then kind of what you can do, you know, to, to make folks aware of this, and then has a ton of information on back, you know, of more information just about childcare in general. So I, I'm hopeful that this is what the commissioners were looking for, when you want a kind of specific information and, you know, some information from providers and community members. So we are, you know, pretty excited to get this out there and looking forward to it.
This is very helpful and we've, you know, we've set aside one point one million dollars of the ARPA monies for early childhoods to try to address these issues.
We should try, we should try to do something soon on it.
Yeah.
And not to beat a dead horse, but Rochelle, I think Musser, everyone knows it's a childcare crisis. What they don't understand, cause quite frankly, I've been in the State House, I've been here, is I didn't understand the role the Early Learning Resource Center played.
Yeah.
And so that's what I'm saying specifically to educate Musser, Casey and him about, that they don't understand that critical link in it.
Yes, to be the support for providers and for families connecting.
Exactly, and that if it's not here, it's gonna be a gap.
Yep.
So the other thing is that Billy Dayton at Fire Tree, you know Billy?
Yes.
Because head start, leases state.
Yes, we leased state there.
So he brought a very interesting proposal to us and maybe, I told him to talk to you, I don't know.
I have not heard from him.
About trying to put together an internship program where our problem is that people come and they can't stop working their ten dollar an hour job to go and get their training as a childcare worker. So he brought to the board of Fire Tree, cause we need, we need, we're in the same boat, right? He said, look, I think it was for eighty-five thousand dollars, they could pay people while they're training, and maybe this is something you guys have thought of already too, and maybe that's in your proposal. But the point being that, you know, a lot of people stop working to go to college, right? Well, the folks in this economic section can't do that. So, but they can't also be with kids and count a staff if they don't have the certification. So the goal would be to pay them the ten or eleven dollars an hour while they're going and while they're training. So it's almost like a work-study program. And then after X amount of time and they've got their hours in, they can get the certification and then they can go on and get the next document they need from the state and begin to fill the void. I mean, I thought his proposal, eighty-five thousand, was pretty modest considering how many staff we can put boots on the ground. So I think we should look at that and maybe you guys can flesh it out and start to push some of that money out before more centers close.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing actually next weekend, I'm here at the Holiday Inn, is we're having a regional training to help people get some of their certifications. So we've been working with the providers, saying like, what are specific certified trainings that we can bring to Lecombe County so you don't have to travel to and that we can help get people trained? So we have over sixty people registered on Friday and Saturday of next week at the Holiday Inn. We have a pretty impressive keynote speaker, Dr. Jackson, who will be talking about the childcare crisis and how individuals in the field can really help move it forward. And so we're, we're basically calling it like, the, like, the we, like, we have to do something.
What day is that?
It's gonna be Friday evening and then Saturday, Saturday most of the day.
A week from tomorrow.
So we can send out something. Yes, a week from tomorrow.
At the Holiday Inn.
At the Holiday Inn.
What time Friday?
Uh, I think it starts at four.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, and I can send you the invitation if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
And so we're pretty excited to, to, to offer that and it's something that we'd, you know, like to even make bigger, you know, potentially with these additional fundings, because we're basically taking something that's a gap within the childcare providers and if we can bring in, you know, these certified trainers, we're helping them, you know, to kind of better their, better their staff. You know, we're providing dinner, we're providing various things so that it's a value add, so that they feel like they're, they're getting what they need, because they need those, because they have staff that are in the field, need the continuing education credits. And so if you lose those, cause people can't get them, you know, you're, you're losing even more staff. So we're looking at it from various ways, as you know, we've had lots of conversations about it. We feel like this report is a really, a great one to get out there, to showcase, like, we're really trying to advocate and educate our public. Lots of comments and, you know, quotes that you're gonna see here from the community to really kind of show, you know, where we're at and, and, and it gives action items of what we can do as a community too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've put in on this.
Thank you.
I know that it's been incredibly timed.
And they do smell. They are funny.
That's the printer.
That's the printer. I noticed you asked that.
I thought something was burning.
I know. We noticed that when they came to the office, we're like, what are these? It's musty knee. Okay, thank you, good to see everyone.
Good to see you. Thank you. Former Lecombe County employee Rochelle Abbott.
There's no public comment this time. Okay. Hi, Scott.
Morning. Scott Miller, eight twenty-two Tucker Street. Don't need to get some free parking for public coming to these things, cause now I'm definitely over my two-hour limit at the street parking and I can't afford the parking garage. The reason I came here today is to talk about roads indirectly at first. My vehicle, y'all's vehicles, each year you have to have an inspection. If they red sticker it, you're not allowed to drive unless you're taking it to or from being repaired. We're required to keep our properties, maintain them in good repair, I think is the way it says in the code books. What about our streets? Well, I won't bring up, go over East Third, turn north on Penn Street. As you come up on Fourth Street on the right-hand side, there's a storm drain, it's a good six inches below and you can tell that it hasn't like recently fallen in. Who's responsible for that? What engineer said, oh, this is okay? What inspector went behind after it was repaved however many times Penn Street was repaved and said, this is fine? That person should be paying for any damage done to vehicles. I have enough trouble having to watch for trucks and cars flying down the hill to, I shouldn't have to worry about a storm drain. And it's not just the one, there's other ones through the county where they're so depressed that it could potentially cause a person to lose control of their vehicle and cause an accident or injury. How come there isn't a code for the state to maintain their streets in good repair? Just like I have to do with my car, like I have to do with my house, like everybody has to do. I have a copy of the manual for uniform traffic control devices. They don't address any of that. And whenever you try to go to the state, sovereign immunity, we're just not responsible for our actions. That just doesn't seem right to me. Another thing, not directly to y'all, but I wanted to make sure it was publicly made known, and if people were still online, I hope they hear of this. Janet Yellen has committed a crime. She said that June first, if they don't raise the debt season ceiling, that social security checks may not go out. The social security trust fund, there's the money there. If the money isn't there, who stole it or misappropriated the funds? So there's no reason to scare elderly people and the disabled people that they won't be getting their money. Also, it's been said by the government officials that even if the trust fund were exhausted, they would be able to pay eighty percent of social security recipients' checks. Are they going to stop taking social security taxes out of your checks? Employers are going to stop having to pay their co-pay into social security June first? So she's telling people lies. You're not allowed to do that. But see, the social security money in the trust fund, the government decides how much interest they want to pay on it. If you allow ten thousand dollars in I-bonds, which is the federal limit for each person, a person making the maximum income that they would pay social security on, they would be able to get their ten thousand dollar a year per person I-bond. Last year it was nine percent. Why is social security only getting two, maybe three percent on the money in the trust fund? It, it just doesn't make any sense to me, you know, I mean, I can count, you know? The reason I say Janet Yellen has committed a crime under the Americans with Disability Act, a person that uses their position of authority to deny a person their legal rights, I'm a disabled person, I get a social security check, she takes my check away, she's violating my rights. I am entitled to that check because I paid into social security for all that year. And when a person uses their position of authority to deny a disabled person their rights, not only can the agency, but the individual can be held liable. I used to have a copy of the ADA, I can assure you, this is absolutely true, and just because she works for the government, doesn't make her immune. And so I sure wish my attorney general here locally, or district attorney, whomever it falls under, would hit her with a nice fat lawsuit and take her house, take her check. And, you know, because that, that's unfair. I'm sure y'all probably hear from elderly people that are already worried now that last week she had to go and say, oh, people aren't gonna get their social security checks. That's a threat. I mean, you know, you're threatening people's lives, you know, you're gonna be homeless, you're not gonna have medication, you're not gonna have food. I don't know how less personal a person can take that.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Have a wonderful day. Let me go get my parking ticket.
Hey, Tom?
Sure, uh, well.
See, see if you go to the authority over there and tell them you're at the commissioner's meeting, that commissioners.
What, social security?
No, what, what is it?
It's over by the prison now.
It's over by the prison now.
It's over the prison now. Anyway, Tom Adams, Williamsport, I won't take too much time, cause I'm out of time too. That's good points. That's cause we have a, you know, a godless rule over us right now and these people are just godless in the, in the federal government for the most part, especially out of the White House and what can we expect from them? You know, they're just godless, they don't care about people, they don't care about the country. And we have runaway inflation because they don't care, as I said, they don't care about the country, they just care about a world system. This is collapsing, they're collapsing us, because this is an easy fix. To take care of this, you cut the spending federally, you cut the government spending, cut it down, and you let production flourish and you stop heavy, heavy taxing, wanna increase taxes on, he says on the rich, well, you know, that only hurts everyone because they have to make up the money in their businesses, it's tied in business and it, it never works. But that's the way to get the masses to, to vote for these people and their nonsense. But, yeah, and if we'd open up our energy, we saw how, what can happen. Open up our energy sector and this nonsense with the whole global warming stuff. There's, I was gonna go into some other things, but, you know, National Day of Prayer, hope we all take, take some time to pray tonight's the event down on the, there was a fourth?
There's one down Ways Garden and then there's one up in Jersey Shore at the middle school.
Yeah, really important.
Yeah.
It's the only way we're gonna find our way back. But, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Any online?
The only one that I didn't get to earlier was, I'd like to share briefly about my own personal plan of advocacy for mental health importance. So I, please do.
All right, we've completed, our, concluded our meeting and will be adjourned, we've completed the agenda, so we'll be adjourned till May eleventh at ten AM. Thank you.
I'm sure staying so bad.
We have to see your citizens at one o'clock.
At one?
Yeah. That's over, is that at the line?
And that's at the line. You getting a check?
And I'll see you guys up there.
All right.